Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Drew Freeman is the pastor at Trinity Baptist Church. He'll be leading us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Larry McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Please bow your heads. Our Father and our God, we come in front of you today humbled by the fact that you would have anything to do with us. We thank you for your amazing grace. We thank you most of all for the gift of your Son. And Father, as you have ordained and set aside people to meet together and conduct business on this earth, we pray that you would grant them clarity of information, clarity of thought, and wisdom in the application, the wisdom that comes from above and not that of this earth. And we just ask that you would bless this meeting today and the decisions that are made, that they may honor you and your Son, for we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month, the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City allows us to honor one teacher in the district as the Teacher of the Month. And this month's winner is Michael Spelous of Taft Middle School. Michael, why don't you come up? Alex, why don't you come up and join him here? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Michael Spelous has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for October 2013, whereas Michael Spelous teaches students at Taft Middle School and has served Oklahoma City Public School students for four years. Michael has been honored as the Taft Middle School Building Teacher of the Year and as the first runner-up in 2013 to 2014 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year competition. Whereas Michael Spelous actively seeks to involve families in the education of their children, and whereas Michael Spelous actively pursues training opportunities to improve his teaching abilities. Whereas Michael Spelous serves as a mentor to less experienced teachers and has presented at national education conferences. Whereas Michael Spelous has coached student athletes at Taft and student athletes from other schools. Whereas Michael Spelous focuses on students' academic achievement and developing students to be responsible, caring citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Michael Spelous on his selection as October 2013 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation and acknowledgement of Michael as a teacher. We do need to vote on this. And so I will ask for a motion in a second. Cast your votes. And it's unanimous, Michael. Congratulations on surviving that. And I'm going to allow you to thank whoever you'd like to thank.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for the vote. I appreciate that. And I would like to thank Taft's city council member, Ed Shadid. Thank you very much for all you do. I would like to thank the Foundation and Robin. What you've done for me and the award in our schools has been nothing but outstanding the last year, and I thank you very much. I would like to thank my beautiful wife, Alex. She's my better half, if you can't tell, and she's a great wife, and I thank her for that. And I just want to say I work with the best teachers and students anyone could ever ask for. I've worked at Taft for the last five years, and they've molded me into the teacher I am today. And I owe so much to them, and I'm very thankful for everything they've done for me. So thank you for having me, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Congratulations. Nice to meet you. Item 3B is the notification that Councilman Greenwell has acknowledged he'll serve as vice mayor for the next six months. So congratulations, David. Look forward to that period. Thank you for your willingness to do that. And Councilman Ryan is due a lot of gratitude for his service, but he's not here today, and so we'll thank him next week when he's back. Do we need to vote on the notification of 3B?
No.
Okay. Well, let's move on to item four then, which is Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 1st, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 24th.
Yes.
Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 5, as requests or uncontested continuances?
Mayor, I have just a couple this morning. On page 11, under item 8, D1, item B, 2308 Northwest 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item G, 928 Northeast 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Let's recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are two items. Any comments or questions here on the MFA?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items. Motion here?
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions on the PPA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent talking.
Move the items if you have any further considerations.
All right. Are there any individual considerations?
We do have three presentations this morning, all related to MAPS III. One is with item U, which is the Oklahoma River Phase II improvements. One is with item V, with the modern streetcar, the northeast line, the Adventure District Line. And item Y is an item with the sidewalks Phase III project.
And, Your Honor, if I may also mention item O. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd like to mention 6M, as in Mary.
Okay. All right, how about the presentations then? Who are we going to start with?
Let's start with Tim Johnson, if we could, to talk about the Oklahoma River improvements.
Good morning. I have a brief PowerPoint. While that's coming up, I just want to thank the council and the staff for allowing my firm the opportunity to do this project. It's been a unique experience, allowing us to work with people around the world, as well as a lot of local talent, to bring a lot of pieces together on this project that will be really important to make venues like this last weekend much easier and better to operate. This project includes several pieces. There are some judging towers, some docks, some cabling that's underwater, and all the pieces will come together in this final plans and specifications. Oops, I pushed the wrong button, sorry.
Tim, before you get started, it would be hard to imagine how anything could get better than last weekend down on the river. It was amazing.
This, from a functional standpoint, will make the life at the operator's position better. I apologize, I pushed the wrong button here. Just one, Tim.
Starting docks and judging platforms was a portion of the project we broke out. It was the overall concept to allow for some new flotation devices to be provided in order to meet the criteria and the timeline for this last week's event. We pulled this portion of the project out and bid it in August, and some of those docks were delivered and installed prior to this weekend's event. So you actually got to experience some of that material that's already in place. The rest of the project is some LED accent lighting, cable crossover markers, utility infrastructure. All this work would go in as the river comes down again. Sound infrastructure, timing displays with a new scoreboard, gateway enhancements, which include signage both at Lincoln and Reno, all the way up into the venue, video camera systems, which will also include split timing cameras, as well as cameras that are set up for, like ESPN, to use as part of the event. New access ramps and a storage building that is being bid as an out alternate. It wasn't in the original concept of the project, but it's much needed for this project. And the electrical transformer screens was also added as part of the lighting project. There were these big green transformers installed on the north side of the river, and we're going to turn those into signs. So to start with, the locations, as you can see, the finish line, we added a 250-meter marker, 500, 1,000, 1,500, and 2,000-meter markers. At each of these locations, there will be a tower on the south side of the river that will focus and allow for judges to sit on those towers to gauge the races. The cabling system, as I mentioned, this is an underwater system that allows for the buoys, as you see in this picture, lane markers, as you see in this picture. If you were down there two or three weeks ago, the old cabling system got wadded up with the storms, and it looked like a rat's nest that they were sorting through to get this put back together for the last weekend's event. This new system is heavy-duty. It's on a winch system that allows us to drop it for storm events and be more protective for storm events. The wayfinding signage, the gateway signage, you can see the two purple dots are the main signs. Those will be lit at Reno and Lincoln, and then at the entry at 6th Street off of Lincoln. The red dots are the signage that incorporates some of the transformer areas that we talked about, and then there's some other wayfinding signs that will be located in the new canal-river connection as well. This is an example of the signs. This image doesn't really pay it good tribute, but they're white with a blue background, again, taking the angle and the striping images from the existing buildings as they've been designed down there. These are the transformer locations, as I mentioned. And then this is what it'll look like. You can see the square boxes to the right of the image there. Those are going to be enclosures that will allow the cover-up of those OGNI transformers, and then also label each building that each transformer is in front of. And then these are the towers I mentioned on the south side. It's a simple canopy that allows for a judge to stand there right on the south shore. We moved these towards the top of the riprap that's there now to allow for a clear pathway, as this image shows. The judges, or I'm sorry, the coaches have asked the operators at the Boathouse District to allow for this pathway to be left open for, in the future, to allow them to flow with, either on bicycles or golf carts, with their team. So we've allowed that in our design. This is a plan view. You can see the, it'll can lever over the water, an angled view. They will be white. The numbers on the, next image, the 1,000-meter, for example, that will be a backlit bright blue to match the blue of the foundation colors. That's what it would look like from the north bank looking south. The storage building and the ramp. Originally, this concept had four or five different ramps along the river. We did get core approval to allow us to put those ramps in, but as part of the design process, we worked with the operators of the gate system that the city's already purchased. And it's a very difficult system to assemble and float into the water with smaller ramps. So what we came back and designed was a single, longer ramp at a much flatter grade that would allow them to float this in as one piece, test it before it goes in the water, and then they can maneuver it in the water much easier than they can assemble it in multiple places. And so the proximity of this ramp is going to be near where the storage building is proposed, which is where the current fenced-in storage area is now. It's hidden behind trees. We've been to the Seneca River Overlay District. We've been to the River Trust and talked about the building itself, which will be an architectural metal building that'll match with a shed roof designed to kind of match the angles of the architecture that's on the north side of the river. This is the location, so it really won't be seen much at all. It'll be hidden behind those trees. And then finally, our budget. Currently, the top two items are the starting system that was purchased before we were under contract, and then the starting docks and judging platforms, as I mentioned, have been delivered, at least a portion of them have been delivered. They've all been assembled, and they're ready to be delivered. The rest of the project is still being estimated with a total project amount of 4.2. We have a little design contingency in there. We have alternate 1 and 2, as I mentioned, to be added to the project. We're hoping to see some savings in various portions of the project as we finalize our cost estimates and as we have prepared this design that's before you today. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tim, if the savings come in at $200,000, will we select to do all the screening? That item looked like it was $150,000.
That'll be up to the staff. We'll make a recommendation, depending on what kind of savings we see.
It seems like it would be a shame to do half the signage and half the, take the projects as a lump sum.
I agree.
Do you have any questions for Tim?
Mayor, next up is the Adventure District Line preliminary report. And this morning, we have Mark Dorn with us from URS to give us that report this morning.
Good morning. So this is a summary of a feasibility study that we conducted over the spring and summer months. Is there a clicker? There we go. Great. For the study, we looked at the Adventure District corridor and analyzed what the potential transit services that could be introduced along this corridor. Briefly, the corridor is made up of three segments. Segment 1 is where the, currently, there's an excursion train operated by the Oklahoma Railway Museum that goes up to the Adventure District Line, down to their museum, or past their museum site, down to about northeast 10th Street. Segment 2 is from 10th down to what we call the Harder Yards. It's about 1st Street right-of-way, and that is owned by COTPA. Segment 1 is also owned by COTPA. Segment 2 is owned by COTPA, but they have an operating agreement with the Union Pacific to serve a couple customers along that corridor. And then Segment 3 is from the Harder Yard into Bricktown, and right now is generally abandoned. So part of our study, we looked at the-
Generally abandoned, but presently owned by Union Pacific.
But owned by Union Pacific, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Abandoned, as far as there's no active railroad operations. Segment 1, so part of our study, we did an assessment of the existing conditions of the tracks. In Segment 1, the tracks are fairly poor condition. The trains operate at less than 20 miles an hour. Segment 2, they're in better shape, the tracks, mostly because they're maintained by Union Pacific, but the speeds are still under 20 miles an hour. And then Segment 3, again, is inactive. The train control, Segment 1, it's primarily what they call dark territory. There's no train signaling. The Oregon, or the Oklahoma Rail Museum trains run very slowly and are controlled by radios. Segment 2, the Union Pacific runs by radio control, and there are some gated crossings, but generally because it's radio-controlled, they run about 10 miles an hour. So some of the different services that we studied is to, well, one option would be to extend the excursion service that Oklahoma Railway Museum runs, to bring, to look at just what are the critical improvements necessary to bring that excursion service down to Bricktown. So just the critical items to address safety. And then you'd also need to build new tracks in Segment 3 to get into Bricktown, and then you would have a station at the service in Bricktown. Another option would be to provide a more upgraded excursion service, so we can increase speeds. That would include some train signaling and more control at gated crossings. And then the key difference would be to provide a direct connection into the intermodal hub. So the operating concept is that it would be much like it is today, maybe some more frequency on the weekends or special events. The upgraded service would include a passing track in the UP, Segment 2, in order to maintain freight operations and have an excursion service pass a freight train, for instance. We would have three stations, basically at the Adventure District, at the Oklahoma Railway Museum site, and then down at Bricktown. The next transit option is what we call a DMU, or Diesel Multiple Unit. These are self-propelled units that are compliant with federal railroad administration requirements if you're going to run on a track with a freight train. It's a safety issue, but these units are able to run on tracks with freight trains. The pictures here, you see on the upper left is a service that's being run in Portland, and the lower left is a service, the Trinity Railroad, in Dallas, in Fort Worth. So in order to provide this service, there'd be a considerable amount of upgrades to provide the speeds, passing tracks as well for, to conduct the freight service and the commuter service. We would add a couple more stations for the patronage, and generally, the operations would be during commute hours and then, and weekends as well. And lastly, the fourth service would be to extend the streetcar service that's being planned for downtown, because the streetcar is not compliant to be run on tracks with freight service. It would require all new tracks. But then it would, as the streetcar would enter downtown, it would come, enter the surface and connect into the streetcar line in Bricktown and provide that connection to the hub at the street level. One advantage of the streetcar mode would be when you get to the Adventure District, then you could actually extend it further using the street infrastructure to provide that last mile, you know, more direct connection to the activity sites. So the streetcar concept would have a few more stations, just to justify the expense and have, you know, connections with major cross streets, and would provide a daily service on about a 30-minute headway. We also looked at the different connections into the intermodal hub. One option would be to come off of the Adventure District Line and the UP owned right-of-way, and right after you get under, is it Johnny Bench? You would rise up and to connect at the BNSF level at the intermodal hub, so at the existing track level. So it would be quite a substantial structure to come up and meet at grade where the Amtrak's platforms are in the BN mainline. There are some, there is a planned parking structure as well in that vicinity that would also need to be coordinated. This connection would be much more conducive for that commuting service, for the DMU. If you were to go through that expense, you would want to have that direct connection to the intermodal hub. Option B would be more conducive to an excursion service, where you could bring that connection, again, up to the grade of the BN tracks, but then you would essentially back into the intermodal hub and thereby avoiding that potential right-of-way issue with the parking structure and the other parcels. Option C would be to terminate at the street level just north of Main Street. This would be more conducive for the extended excursion service, so kind of the low-cost option. So just overall summary, you know, the two excursion options, we'd maintain, using the existing vehicles, service would be much like it is today, on weekend services or special events. The commuter rail would require new vehicles and would serve the commuting hours at about a 30-minute headway every 30 minutes. And same with the modern streetcar, although the idea with the modern streetcar is that you could have all-day service. But that could also, that's what we studied, is an all-day service. But you could also pull that back to just a commuting service, too. It would be quite possible. The key differences with the improvements to the infrastructure, the higher-speed options, as you can imagine, the upgraded excursion service, the commuter rail, and the streetcar would require significant track improvements, as well as crossing protection. The extended excursion would really just look at the critical upgrades and then extending that track into Bricktown. The operate, you know, with those track improvements, you could bring the speeds up to about 45 miles an hour. The extended excursion would still be limited to about 10 or 20 miles an hour service. And again, the advantage of the streetcar option would, you could have that one-seat ride all the way to some of the destinations in the Adventure District. The connections to the intermodal hub, the options A and B, bringing the alignment up to the track level at the intermodal hub would require some pretty substantial structures and some coordination with a right-of-way uses being planned. And the most notable, and one notable difference is with the option where you back the train into the station, that would require a safety stop, a brake check, which would add to your time, your runtime, essentially. The maintenance facility, the idea would be the upgraded and the extended excursion services could utilize the same facility that the Oklahoma Railway Museum has. The commuter rail would need a brand-new facility, new crews, new spare parts, and a full facility. The modern streetcar could quite feasibly take advantage of the facility that would be built as part of the downtown streetcar. So it'd just be an expansion of this storage yard for the modern streetcar. The system upgrades, so with the higher-speed options, again, we would need full crossing protection and train signaling for some of the passing tracks. The extended excursion would just have those critical upgrades to address safety at some of the crossings, adding crossbucks and warning bells, and probably most cases, the gated crossings as well. That's what we carried in the capital cost. And the modern streetcar would also require the infrastructure to have the overhead wires, unless we identify- unless we identify, as part of the modern streetcar project, a new technology that can provide a battery or a CNG mode. There are those technologies for the battery mode that can run up to between a mile and a mile or two, so there might be some capital cost savings. But right now, we, for our feasibility work, we priced a full-wired system from Bricktown to the Adventure District line. So rough-order of magnitude costs for the extended excursion, we're estimating that it should be about a $10 to $17 million capital investment. With the upgraded excursion, it's higher order of magnitude of $46 to $66 million. Again, a lot of that cost comes from those structures to connect directly to the intermodal hub, and the commuter rail is $85 to $100 million. Again, it's that direct connection, but also a new maintenance base and vehicles as well. And the modern streetcar is similar cost, about $95 to $105 million. In the order of magnitude, operating costs, the extended excursion is similar to the upgraded, about $1 to $2, $1 to $3 million. It depends on the frequency of service that you would want to run. The commuter rail service would be about $3 to $4 million, because the modern streetcar would be about $2.3, or $2 to $3 million. There are some savings realized because you already have a maintenance base and you already have the crews and the maintenance equipment. So key issues, in order to run jointly through freight service and a transit service through Segment Two where UP runs, you would need to go through negotiations or agreements with the Federal Railroad Administration. Now, what's working in your favor is that COTPA owns Segment Two, as you recall, and that contract for the operating agreement for Union Pacific is up for renewal, and so this is a good time to build in those contingencies, to keep those doors open in the future if a transit service wanted to be introduced. Same with Segment Three, which is owned by Union Pacific, but it would be feasible to include an operating agreement or the provision for a future operating agreement through Segment Three in order to provide that connection into Bricktown. And then there is one issue that I would like to address, is the clearances adjacent to Harder Yard. As part of our report, we had a concept design set, and this is one exhibit from the plan set. And essentially, there's been some discussions between the Transportation Subcommittee and the Union Pacific about the feasibility, and they pointed to this as their key issue. So if you look at the graphic, the light blue line are the tracks that Union Pacific operates on, the Harder Yards in the lower-right corner, and the light blue east-west line essentially terminates at I-235, sorry. That line, what they do is they assemble their trains on that line, and they would look for a 25-foot clearance between a transit line, which is represented in the red line here, and their staging track. And so that red line is what we've drawn, and with a compliant vehicle, so the commuter rail vehicle or the extended excursion service, we would be looking at that red line. And this could require, well, we're thinking it requires a purchase of a small partial lot that's privately owned, and it's noted there in the hashing, it's assessed as less than $4,000. Our experience is, when you're talking about the streetcar option, that generally when you're running by, especially a storage facility or a switching yard, that the Union Pacific will want more clearance than 25 feet. And so we have sketched in for you kind of a backpocket contingency alignment, which is shown in the dashed blue, and that is for the streetcar option, and that would utilize the first street right-of-way in order to skirt by that switching track and then re-enter the railroad corridor once you're beyond that staging track from UP, which is shown in a couple options there near I-235. So our recommendation is, if you were to move forward, is to start with the low cost, the extended excursion option, to do those minimum upgrades and do what's ever necessary to get the service down to Bricktown, so you can start, you know, give it some exposure, start generating some ridership, and then look to, you know, in the future, for ways to improve that service. So, you know, when you can afford it, or through a future grant, you know, you can make track improvements, you can add passing tracks, you can improve those speeds to the excursion service. So the better, you know, as the improvements come, the ridership should build, because it'll be a faster service and become more of a substantial transit service. And you could even start with this and then convert it later to a streetcar service if that was so desired. That's the conclusion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, Sunday morning, as I was on my way to church, I went down northeast 36th Street, and I looked to my right-hand side, and I looked over to the Oklahoma Railroad Museum, and they had hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals who was there on Sunday morning. And so I looked over, and it was good to see that many people over in that area for us, the railroad museum. And so I then proceeded on my way to church to teach Sunday School, got on I-35, and then looked to my right and to see the train moving down Grand Boulevard brought some excitement to my eyes. So then I went on to church, and then after church, I stopped down through the Santa Fe Train Station, just looked around and saw the true opportunities that our city has as it relates to either commuter rail or, and matter of fact, streetcar. And so then I went down, had lunch, brunch at Urban Roots, and then walked down Russell M. Perry Street, and I looked at the Union Pacific rail to the left and to the right, and saw the potential of what can happen for us at the eventual line. Then went to Fourth Street, 10th Street, 16th, 23rd, 36th, and 50th Street. And so I see the great opportunity that the Adventure District does for our city, number one. It provides opportunity for individuals who live in the heart of northeast Oklahoma City, because it runs straight through northeast Oklahoma City. Then it connects not only people who live in northeast Oklahoma City to Bricktown, downtown, and also the Adventure District. It ties the Bricktown District and the Adventure District together. I would, me personally, I'd like to see further study done, so we can see what it would take to get the, whether it be commuter rail or streetcar, to the zoo in Remington Park, because there's been some concerns with the individuals who are involved with the Adventure District is, okay, it stops at 50th Street, but we still have an issue. How do we transport individuals to the zoo, or Remington Park, or Caball Hall of Fame, or Tinseltown, and so forth like this? But I ultimately see the grand opportunity that it creates for northeast Oklahoma City. If you look from northeast 23rd through, to northeast 36th Street, where the line goes, there's actually an African-American church who owns property along that line. So imagine what type of economic development that could create in the community, as well as, you see, it goes straight through neighborhoods that a majority of African-Americans live. So I think this is a great opportunity for our city, and I know Union Pacific has been trying to throw their weight around Oklahoma City, but I know some individuals who Union Pacific are definitely afraid of. So I think when that time comes, we definitely need to exercise that option. But overall, I think this, the eventual line is what's going to eventually change the face of economic development in northeast Oklahoma City.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. That's, it's a great asset that's in public control with the corridor and COTPA ownership.
And I also believe that the next Tiger Grant that this city applies for needs to strictly deal with the eventual line.
I have a couple of questions. One is, it seems to me the most likely light rail opportunity is the light rail opportunity that would run to Midwest City, Tinker, Dell City, and it will require the acquisition of some of this same property we're talking about, I think it will, in order to tie that to the hub. Was that taken into consideration when you did this study?
We did not look at that. I could say that any line that went further east would, if it was light rail, doesn't have that, well, the issue would be crossing the freight tracks with a non-compliant vehicle, which is-
It has to go south to get across the UP line, to get to Midwest, to get to Dell City.
Yeah, right.
Well, it seems to me that if we're entering to this kind of a planning process, we ought to look at all those things at the same time, because it seems to me to build another excursion line is not, doesn't really go to the idea of transportation. I like this idea, but this idea is a pure excursion line. It's not a transit line. I mean, it's not designed, you don't even call it that. You call it an excursion, which I appreciate that. That's what it is.
Right now it is.
And that doesn't mean it's bad, but that's a different, that is a different kind of a facility than one that is designed to move people to work and that kind of thing. So I like this, but I think this is probably, this probably ought to be funded out of the convention and tourism budget as opposed to the MAPS III budget for transportation. I'm going to be all for this idea, but when we get down to funding it, it does not seem to me it's an appropriate use of the funds for MAPS III. That's not your problem.
Yeah, I don't think that it's intended to be a MAPS III project.
The other, the other, that's, I've blended both of the pieces together, but I want to do, I want to be sure that when we do this, we don't make this more difficult, or we couldn't, or we don't do something that if we were doing it at the same time, we could have provided right-of-way or access to do a light rail system, which I believe is coming.
True. Well, and so the main line for Union Pacific comes out of the Harder Yard and comes south and then west. So it's getting over that track would be the issue, and that could be an aerial structure or-
But the entrance into the hub is going to be very close together, virtually, I mean, if you put a light rail line that goes to Tinker and it comes across the Harder Yard and comes north, isn't it going to have to get into the hub virtually the same way you're getting into the hub with this?
Correct. Depending on the technology, but light rail would be very similar operating parameters as the modern streetcar option. They are little heftier vehicles and a little more comfortable to ride longer distances, but the technology is essentially the same. So you could still have the option of entering the street right-of-way with a light rail, much like the modern-
Well, I would personally like to see some work done on that idea, because I wouldn't want to be doing something for one or the other that was, that would made the second one more difficult.
Yeah, I don't think it would, I understand, yeah. I don't think-
Because we're probably talking about two different types of technology. If you do the expanded excursion line, you're going, that's a train, that's a railroad, that's a railroad track. So that, neither of those are contemplated for the streetcar line, which might, I had a hope that it might go toward Health Sciences Center, or a light rail line that might go to Tinker, which would, is a different animal altogether. They're all three different kinds of animals.
Well, you have, but if you had two technologies, so if you're running excursion line to Adventure District and a light rail line, if you're in control of the operations of that track, then you build in temporal separation, we call it. So you have a separation of operating windows for each technology, and it becomes, as far as a federal approval, it's easily done when you're in control of that.
Well, I'm aware that, given enough money, engineers and planners can design virtually anything, but I would like to see it done at, kind of together, so we could have an idea of what the options really are, so we don't do something that wastes money or we have to go back and undo it. I'm a little concerned about the 180 project and the streetcar, because they, I think they could have been better coordinated, and I don't want to get that situation going further, because it's going to be costly if it is. And now's the time to plan it. While we're still looking at technologies, we're looking at which kind of gadget we're going to use. Is the gadget going to be a streetcar, or is it going to be a train, or is it going to be light rail, you know, so?
Rick, do you have other comments on that?
In a vacuum, in a vacuum, the idea of the expanded excursion thing to the zoo, to the, even to the track, is a great idea in a vacuum. It's a great idea. What I want to know is how they work together, how we blend all those things, so that-
Yeah, it would be hard for me to say at this point.
Okay.
Ricky, you have any context?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, to talk to this, Rick Kane, Director of Public Transportation and Parking. There actually is a study going on right now. It's being coordinated by the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, or ACOG, where we're actually doing a corridor study. There's three studies, one of them looking at the corridor that connects Edmund to downtown Oklahoma City, Norman to downtown Oklahoma City, and then the Tinker Midwest City connection. And so they are looking at how to make that Tinker Midwest City connection and considering multiple technologies, much like we went through the alternatives analysis, where you have to assume, you cannot assume a certain type of technology. So they're looking at the heavier rail, the commuter rail concept, the light rail concept, BRT, all those terminologies that you experienced going through alternatives analysis. And that's taking place right now. I would guess that that's probably got another 12 to 15 months to run. They actually, the consultant will be making here in the next week or two, a presentation on some of their basic early findings relative to those, that corridor study, but the intent is, again, to blend these, because there is such a significant piece. If you're going to get into Bricktown and you're going to come from the east side, there's going to be significant overlap in getting there.
All right. I'm familiar with that study. My concern is, is this study familiar with the study you just talked about? It seems to me this study's been done kind of in a vacuum.
This study was done because it's focusing more on going to the far northeast portion as opposed to the other, but they're certainly sensitive to that overlap, and this information is being shared with that corridor study, so that they're not working independently in that regard.
Ed?
Well, and there's a third study, which is the Tiger Two Planning Study, which I guess will be complete at the end of this month or thereabouts. Does that study, which looked at streetcar routes potentially going into northeast Oklahoma City, does that look at the economic development potential of any of this route?
The Tiger Grant that you're referring to actually takes a look, if you think back to our locally preferred alternative route that went from the downtown across Fourth Street and ended to the Health Science Center, that's the segment that they're looking at and doing some economic consideration, but not this zone itself.
And this, your study didn't look at economic development potential, just the technical aspects of-
Technical feasibility.
Did you look at, where Segment Two and Three come together right at Washington Park? I mean, it seems like that, I mean, and just with a goal of trying to get into the Health Science Center, that looks like a potential segue, because you've got Washington Park and the Urban Renewal Authority owns a tremendous amount of land, a straight path right into the heart of the Health Science Center. Did you-
We didn't look at that, but it's definitely feasible, or further north on, say, 8th or 10th, absolutely would be, it'd be more capital-intensive, as you can imagine, but it's- capital intensive, as you could imagine, but it's certainly feasible.
Okay. Well, we, we wrote this, I think, with a consultant nationally, Pete White, and I did about six months ago, and it, it, it moves slowly. I mean, I think under 20 is generous. It's, it was five to 10, and, and we were, as we were going through, we were having trouble finding places where we thought transit-oriented development could occur. I mean, the, the, the top half of segment one is really in the middle of the golf course.
Right.
And it just seems like along the, the bottom half of segment one and much of segment two is difficult to imagine where exactly you'd have transit-oriented development.
And that, I didn't mention it, but that was in our list of recommendations to conduct a study for TOD opportunities and around different station areas, so.
Okay. And then finally, I just, I was struck by the, the railroad, we met with them a couple of years ago about how purchasing that, that first segment, and they told us they would meet with us for free the first time, and the second time they'd have to charge us. There's just, there's a, it's, those negotiations might be tougher than, than we think.
Well, and you have the asset of segment two working in your favor.
Right. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Mark?
Can I, just a couple of them. What would be, do you know what the difference in time from the Adventure District Station to downtown would be between the excursion type of vehicle and the commuter vehicle?
Um, I, I don't recall the, the runtimes.
I mean, the time it would take to get from one station to the other endpoint? Thirty minutes, an hour?
It, uh, it'd be about 30 minutes for the, the extended excursion, so the, the low cost. I'm, I'm kind of guessing here, but-
Yeah.
But it would be more on the order of 10 to 15 minutes with the, the higher speed options.
Okay. Are there any rails, rail lines from the Adventure District north towards Edmund currently, or would you-
I'm not-
Have to construct new lines to connect from there up to-
To extend further north?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the corridors further north. I don't know if Rick can-
Um, there's actually, COTP actually does own land, land that goes further north. The issue that you've got is you've got to cross under I-35. Our, our ownership stops just short of what would be Wilshire and I-35, and you're on the east side of I-35 when you get to that point.
Uh-huh.
Um, we have sold portions of that land, but it's, you know, you'd still have a long way to go to get to Edmund, so, you know, as, as you think in terms of high-speed rail and how that might come into Oklahoma City, they're actually looking at options that would be on the west side of, of I-35 as it comes down from Tulsa. So I think conceivably to go up to, to get to Edmund, our railroad right-of-way is probably not a, not something of choice.
Well, would this COTP study, I mean, ACOG study that's looking at rail transportation from Edmund, Oklahoma City, and from Norman to Oklahoma City, could it somehow connect to the Adventure District Station?
Um, right now, the, the concept that's being looked at is, is utilizing the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Track. So you would miss the, you would miss the Adventure Station. You'd, you'd make your connection down at the multimodal hub.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add, I'm going to actually be holding several meetings as it relates, public meetings as relates to the eventual line coming up soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to know. Anybody else? We have one citizen who signed up to speak on the issue. Mark, thank you for coming down. Joe Sarge Nelson?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm calling from the end of the meeting.
Okay. We have one more presentation under the consent docket. That's, is that Craig Wallace from SRB? Okay. Craig, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Craig Wallace with Smith, Roberts, Baldeswiler. This morning, we'd like to make a presentation on Project Three. It's actually the preliminary engineering report presentation for Project Three of Phase One, MAPS III Sidewalk Improvements. The, as we start the presentation, we show a map of the sidewalk master plan. These alignments that are shown here are actually one through 43. These are the anticipated alignments, both in Phase One and Phase Two of this sidewalk improvement project. Phase One map is our project, and, and these alignments show the multiple projects. Project number one, which is under construction, is shown here in this slide. We also show Project Two, which is also under construction, more or less in the south side of Oklahoma City. The alignments for that is shown in this slide on, they are on Project Three. There's actually six alignments. There were seven in the other two projects, but in this one, there's six alignments. Four of them, again, are on, in the north-central part of Oklahoma City, and the other two alignments are in the south-central part of Oklahoma City. As we go forward, we see that this is basically a table and a breakdown shows the wards in which these alignments are in, as well as, again, the Projects One, Projects Two, and then in the bottom, as it's highlighted there in red, is the alignments for this Project Three. We look at some pictures of these, and I know you have hard copies of these. I'm sorry that it's kind of, some of these pictures are kind of dark, but we see the different factors that went into play in identification of these alignments, but also the challenges that we have. Interse, we see intersection improvement here on the, the west side. This is actually at Northwest 59th Street, looking south. Another one of the key criteria was connectivity of the sidewalk. As we see on the right, the sidewalk that actually ends as it goes north towards Northwest Highway. This is on May Avenue on the west side. Alignment seven, which again is in north part of Oklahoma City, on North May Avenue between 36th and 50th Street. You can see some challenges that we have on the right with connectivity. This is actually the bridge there at I-44, and how we would, this is actually looking west. The sidewalk would be north and south along May Avenue on the east side, but we posed us some challenges with this junction box there at the abutment, bridge abutment. On the, the, the other slide, we actually see intersection at 47th Street, and obviously the pedestrian improvements that would have to be made at the intersections as we go through those. Alignment 15, again, is on North May, between 63rd Street and Wilshire. We do see some connectivity of some new developments. We see that there obviously is a new development there with sidewalk, and as we look north at the same location, you can see, even though we've had a, a fairly wet summer and, and the grass continues to grow, you can see a definite desired path that goes along the east side of May Avenue, north of 70th Street. Alignment 18 is southwestern, which runs from I-240, or 74th Street, south to around 81st Street, and again, we see some intersection improvements that will have to be dealt with. We also see the desired path and the connectivity of sidewalk as you look to the south along the west side of, of western. You can see where sidewalk continues to, excuse me, to the south. Alignment 19, we see trail connections. That's the South Grand Trail, and this particular alignment will tie the sidewalk to that South Grand Trail. We also see how it affects transit location of a bus stop there and how construction of the sidewalk will tie that bus stop. The last alignment on this particular project is alignment 20, which is northwest, 122nd Street, May Avenue to Penn, and again, the same, the same criteria as we look at those connectivity to existing structure, as well as connection to the schools. When we look at the budget for our project, our Phase One and the three projects, you can see our original construction budget here of about 3.27 million. We anticipated that this project, or this phase, excuse me, would have 17 alignments and about 14.5 or 14.47 alignment miles. We can see as Project One and Project Two has already been let, and the construction cost or the bid amount that is recorded there on Project Three, that actually is an estimation, engineer's estimate based off of what we've seen in the first two projects. There is a note that we actually were able to increase Phase One by approximately 2.01 miles, alignment miles, and gain a total of 20 alignments for Phase One. This just shows a timeline of, of how we started. Notice proceed was in October of 2012. Preliminary report for this project, understanding that two projects have already been let, was August. 95% planned specification review will be this month. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that in for approval with the subcommittee and the advisory board, where we can receive bids in November and award a contract in December. Here's a summary of costs that allowed us to, to pick up those additional alignments and see, you know, use of, proper use of the funds. Project One had a approximate cost of 33, 34 per linear foot. Now, that's on alignment miles. As you look at actual sidewalk constructed within those alignments, the actual cost of that sidewalk was approximately 42.82. You can see that cost went up a little bit in Project Two to approximately 49.11 per linear foot of sidewalk actually constructed. And as we projected the cost of Project Three, we tried to, to hit a number that we felt like was competitive of around $45.21. This is actually a picture of completed, I say completed, predominantly complete alignment. This is alignment two, and it's on western. And actually, this is alignment one. That is a misprint. Alignment one, as far as priority goes, is northwestern between Britton Road and Heffernan Road. That alignment is complete. We saw quite a, I would say success in that because it seemed like the pedestrians were catching up with our workers. As the sidewalk was completed in that area, you saw a lot of use in that. And that contractor completed this several weeks ago, and you continue to see people using that, but we wanted to show a picture of how the Projects One and Two were ongoing. This is actual, actually under constructions for alignment three, and also alignment six and 12 are also under construction. You can see that this is not quite complete. I mean, we had a, a rain prior to this where a little bit of sediment came down on the sidewalk. Obviously, before this would be completed, sod will be placed, the sidewalks will be clean, and obviously prior to us finalizing that project. But we just wanted to show that the sidewalks are being constructed, they're moving forward, and I believe that's the presentation for, excuse me, preliminary engineering report for Phase One, Project Two of our sidewalks.
All right. Any questions for Craig?
Craig, how do you anticipate getting the linear foot cost down from 49.11 to 45.21 from Project Two to Project Three?
Uh, just looking at the lengths of the sidewalks, whenever you see the, the number of runs in that, or the linear feet of runs, Project Two possibly had some additional tie-ins, some radiuses, the ramps. We just tried to look at the construction costs for the items that were included in Project Three, so that's why it, it was in, it was estimated less.
And if those bids come in higher, we just do less?
If they, if they come in higher, we'll have to, obviously, maps will review the, the cost of that in relationship to budgets.
Thank you.
Yeah. David?
Are all these sidewalks the same width, four feet?
No, actually, the sidewalks have two different widths. There's five-foot sidewalks when they're off of the curb line. If they're constructed completely behind the back of curb, then it's a six-foot sidewalk.
Okay. And perhaps, Dennis, you know, when a developer comes in and develops property, what width of sidewalk are they required, the minimum width?
The same width. They were, they're required a five-foot sidewalk unless it's adjacent to the curb, and then it's six.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, my question is, how, how do we stand with what we committed in, with the MAPS? We committed 70 miles of sidewalks with MAPS.
Okay, and-
And I know we're not, I know we're well under that, but I just wonder where we stand with regard to that.
We're, we're currently working on the Phase Two plans also, and, and we'll be able to get a, a closer estimate on that, but I think we're going to be somewhere in the 30-mile range.
Well, are we losing ground? I thought we were about 35 miles the last time we talked.
Well, maybe when we get the Phase Two done, I'll be able to give you a more accurate. I'm, I'm just trying to be a little conservative, I think.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I mean, every mile seems to make a lot of difference when you're talking about numbers as low as 35 to 70.
Right, and they do, and like, like Mr. Wallace said, some of the particulars with each of the alignments, when we run into more driveways, with, he's got one, the one picture he had where there's a strange structure that's going to cost a considerable amount to, to take the lid off that and lower it so that you can cross it. There's, uh, concrete boxes that need to get lengthened. There's just different things, that picture right there.
I would like periodic updates when they're available. It's a concern that we may, we committed to do a certain amount, and, and, and I know, I've, I've listened to the mayor's commitment that we're going to do what we committed to, but I'd like to know where we are with the MAPS money when, when those figures become available, at any time they do.
Glad to provide that to everybody.
So we just kind of have a, so the target, hopefully, it's moving, and it's moving this way.
Understand.
Do you remember, if 30 miles, how many of the weighted projects that would mean that we got through?
David, on the summary that we have for Phase One and Phase Two, we had showed a map of up to 43 alignments, and that's, as David said, approximately 30 miles. So, you know, weighting the difference between alignment miles and the, the priority ranking, there is a variance there, but if you get to 43 in Phase One and Phase Two, you're going to be somewhere around 32 to 34 miles.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Craig? All right, Craig, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that ends the series of presentations on the consent docket. We have a, some council comments. David, you wanted to comment on, on item O?
Yes, sir, thank you, Your Honor. This is for a grant, an agreement award with the U.S. Department of Agriculture concerning an emergency debris removal in far south Ward Five, but it's limited between Western Avenue and Pennsylvania, and we've received several calls from areas west of Pennsylvania. So to the extent we can apply for further grants, I really think we need to, to go as far west as I-44, because there are areas, and I found out this morning, that some of these, oh, bar ditches or whatever they're technically called, are so filled with debris that people are taking some of it out and placing it closer to the streets, some even getting out into the street just to clear off, uh, the area, because it's creating some flooding issues with, with those residents. So I would encourage us to try to extend west of Pennsylvania, again, all the way over to I-44 in this area. This is great, it's needed, but I just think we need to expand that area. Thank you.
Uh-huh. And Meg, you wanted to comment on item M?
Yes, Mayor, if I could. This is an award of a contractor, Rudy Construction, for, for projects extending our Project 180 downtown, so I just kind of want to give folks a heads-up that we're getting to start on some new projects. We're looking at D.A. McGee between North Robinson to Broadway, Northwest Fourth Street and Robinson intersection, North Robinson from Park Avenue to D.A. McGee, and Robert S. Kerr from Harvey to Broadway. So we're going to have a little bit of fun getting around downtown again for a while, but they will be wonderful improvements once we get them completed. Thank you.
Any other comments from council on the consent docket?
I have a question about T. This is the, the item that had to do with the radios that were involved with the state audit. I, I just wanted to, this seems like a, a something that has happened that should not have happened. I, I've, I've talked to, I've talked to the, to Chief Barry about it, who's the Assistant City Manager in charge of this division, and, and the answers, I mean, I, I believe I'm getting answers that are, I consider to be fair answers, but they don't answer the real question about how something like this could have occurred. An overpurchase, I, I, I've just, I've just never understood quite how this happened. I have some knowledge about this because back in another lifetime, I represented a, a, a proposal in, in the radio purchase agreement that led to these, to this company being selected. And at the time, there was a very great concern that we had to select companies that their, their service wasn't proprietary. And it's my understanding now, this company is as proprietary as any other company- And it's my understanding now, this company is as proprietary as any other company, and so the ability to use equipment other than equipment that, that these people produce is the same as it was ten, fifteen years ago. And now, and we made this gigantic overpurchase where we're going to virtually give these radios away, and I, I, I just don't think it's been thoroughly vetted to my, from my standpoint. It's just, maybe it is what it is, and we ought to keep our mouth shut and just go ahead and eat eight-hundred thousand dollars, but it just seems to me that's not, that's not good business. I just don't think that's the way we ought to be doing things. I'd really like to know a little bit more about it. I'd like a little bit, know, know more about the process that's going forward to make sure it's an open process, that we don't wind ourselves into a situation where we overbought radios that are not interchangeable with anybody else's systems. This, this is just a system that, a problem that should not have occurred, and I, I just don't want it to go by without at least raising the question that I'm concerned about it, and I'll be continuing to look at it.
We've got Kerry Wegman that's come in the chambers, probably can address this.
Sure. Councilman, do you have a specific question for me to answer, or you want me to just?
Well, I, I think I'm concerned just about the general tenor of what happened. I mean, how, how we'd get this many radios that we can't use, keep them this long, have to dispose of them at this big a discount, some of them brand-new in the box, I understand, never been taken out of the box.
Sure. So as you do know, this, this particular purchase was separate from the radio system purchase.
Right.
And it was a part of the larger package that we had with, with ACS. When we were looking at, and we put out the, the specifications for the public safety systems themselves, that, that project, we knew we needed to upgrade the wireless communication to the, to the mobile vehicles. We'd been using a UHF kind of slow communication for data in the past. We asked the providers, the bidders, to give us different options on how we might upgrade that and how we would increase the bandwidth and, and do what we wanted to do with what we had planned. The, in the negotiations, what we found was that we had an opportunity to put up a higher-speed network through the implementation of the Wi-Fi system that you're familiar with. But we also knew we couldn't, we couldn't cover the entire landmass that we had first responders that had to operate in. And so we put us, we were looking for a supplemental way to have some connectivity, even if it was at a lower speed in the outlying areas. We called it umbrella coverage. It ran, this project ran concurrent with the implementation of the trunched radio system. And at that time, there were no non-proprietary trunched radio systems. As you know, it was either a Motorola type or a MACOM type at the time. And so we were, in the review process, it, it appeared to us, and all of the recommendations to us led us to believe that we could utilize that same trunched radio system that we were building out for voice and still run data in the outlying areas or in areas where we didn't have coverage for the Wi-Fi system. And so the implementation of those ran concurrently. And when the vendor would do the implementation, and all the radios were purchased up front, there was no incremental purchases. We, we purchased enough for police and fire vehicles. Then they were implemented together with the mobile data computers, together with the voice radios, together with lights and sirens, the whole, the whole package. And so as we were on the back end of implementing and going live with the voice radios, we were also doing the implementation with the data radios to try to use that. And as we, as we got those, that implementation going, we determined through use, actual use cases, that the software that was running and the communication between the mobile computers and the servers on the back end, the communication protocols were, we called it chatty. That meant they talked a lot. "Are you there?" "Yeah, I'm there." You know, there was a lot of that going on. And in the trunched radio system, it was having to exercise that more than what we all anticipated. And we were trying to go, move towards going live with the voice radio system, and we were concerned that it would, would create huge communication for the voice radios. And we determined that was not in the best interest. And about this time is when advances in the cellular industry were coming out and may, were being available to us at a reasonable price. And so that's when we made the decision to change course on that.
Yeah. I, I was only able to hang with you for about sixty seconds, maybe there's. It's technical, and it's difficult for me to follow all the, the technical. I think that the issue for me is that if the state auditor had not brought this to the council's attention, would we have ever known that there were eight-hundred thousand dollars worth of radios sitting in storage in boxes? And would we have then been able to take this action and at least reclaim, it looks like, a hundred and fourteen thousand of our money back?
Right.
And how, more to the process and more, more to, you know, how were they purchased? And then, once we had realized that it wasn't going to work, then what do we do with eight-hundred thousand dollars worth of radios sitting in storage? And how do we, you know, how do we take action? So to me, the, the flavor I got from the state auditor's report was, you really, beyond just looking at the, the radios, you need to look at the process. And it, it seemed like they wanted something from our city auditor, maybe to look at, you know, to look at report. So since we've had the state auditor's report, we really haven't had anyone opine about, I mean, not that I'm aware of, from the city auditor's office, about how we might tweak things.
We, we've been working with, with the city auditor on this. They're working with.
Will there be a written report for us to digest?
I would have to defer to their office, but I would, I've been, I've been working with them for, for some time now, going through this process with them.
Okay. It certainly would be helpful to me to have some written report, just to help me understand what, what you were explaining there, and then what, how we might alter the process.
Sure. We, we think that's a grand idea.
Thank you.
And, and with regards to your earlier question, councilman, as, as you're aware, we're in the process of, of trying to identify and make available funding for the upgrade and replacement of the current trunched radio system. And that is to move it to that, that new standard that would allow us to use competitive products for radios and other components. That's a, that's a key portion of that.
I, I, I realize mistakes happen, and I think, and technology changes, and probably doesn't change any faster anywhere than it does in the radio business. I mean, I real, I know how fast that happens. And maybe this is just unfortunate, maybe that's, that's the only way to describe it, but it's a, it's a substantial dollar amount of unfortunate-ness, if that's what it is. I mean, I, I just, I, somewhere, I, I just have the feeling that this could have been avoided in some way. I'm not sure, I, I probably shouldn't make those kind of comments unless you've got a solution, and I don't have one. So, but it just, on its surface, just common sense seems to tell me that we should have reacted sooner, we should have done something, because that's a lot, eight-hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And it's a lot of money to be put in. At this end of the time, the reason we're going to take such a hit is because these radios are not even going to be supported in another couple of years. Is that, isn't that right?
That's correct.
So that's why we're going to take such a hit. So while we've been sitting here deciding, their value just falling off the cliff. And maybe I should, I ought to go back to my unfortunate and just left it at that.
No, I, I understand, we understand, and we will, we are looking for ways to make improvements in the process to make sure we don't do this again.
Kerry, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments on the consent docket from the council? We have a motion in second already, don't we? All right, let's vote then. It passed unanimously. And we're on to the concurrence docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
All right. Is there any individual consideration for an item on the consent docket? All right, let's vote. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We're on now on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. First is a zoning case in Ward Seven. The address is twenty-nine fifty-three Northeast Twenty-third Street. It's currently R-1, single-family residential, and I-2, moderate industrial, and it would become a new plan unit development. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, we had this item deferred, and the reason why they have requested to be rezoned is because Development Services has went out to this address several times to ticket them for not being in compliance. And as you recall, on the September the tenth meeting, I showed pictures of what this particular property looks like. I cannot support the rezoning of this particular address because it just legalizes them to continue to have junking, debris and junking trucks on Northeast Twenty-third Street. And we are actually trying to create economic development along Twenty-third Street. I'm excited here, in the next few months, we'll have some exciting news about some development along Northeast Twenty-third Street. If you look at this particular property, some of this property that, that they are trying to rezone is R-1, and this particular property is actually in the Mickdale School District. And so I need to keep all residential properties north of Northeast Twenty-third as Mickdale School District. So I actually, and I see the applicant is not here, and I did meet with the applicant several times, and the applicant was not able to address my concerns. So I move forward now on this application.
Okay. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right. David, it looked like you had a comment.
No, it's just.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. The, the motion is to deny the application. Any other comments from council?
I, I'm going to vote with the denial, but from looking at the, I, I'm not sure how this denial would, we, we could hope if, that this would be sustained in court. I mean, this, what he's asking for is, occurs all around what he's doing.
Well, and, and see, and see, that's the, that's, that's the problem. If you go farther north of this, this residential, I have a neighborhood that's actually adjacent to this property line right here, and we're actually trying to create rooftops along that, that area. So the concern was to keep that area residential. And then, if you just go past Twenty-third Street, we just have a row of auto mechanic shops that just have junk and debris. And that's why, and, and Charles, if, if you can explain that this particular, this...
I'm, I'm going to vote with you. You, did, did you hear that? I'm not going to vote against it. I'm going to vote with you.
Thank you.
But I, but I do have some serious concerns about the fact that the property is surrounded by similarly zoned property. And I know when you get across the street, the, what goes on in the neighborhood has a whole lot to do with what you can do on your property when you attempt to rezone it. And the Planning Commission voted in approval, subject to the technical evaluations. Like I say, I'm going to vote with you. The guy's not here, but I, I'm a bit concerned that we could be walking into a lawsuit.
Anybody else want to speak? Yeah, Ed?
Well, can we just, can we hear from planning?
Sure. I mean, planning, planning suggested approval, and the planning department approved it unanimously. I mean, can we just hear what?
That recommendation is really based on the existing pattern of zoning here on Twenty-third Street. As you can tell, it's a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential, and they had an existing non-conforming warehouse on the property. And so the, the recommendation from the planning department, Development Services both, were just, was consistent with kind of how this has developed there.
Charles, can we hear it? Because you and I had discussions about this pre, pre-pro property and what's happening on Northeast Twenty-third Street.
Well, let's, we've given them notice about how they store their vehicles, their trailers and things like that. They're, they're storing them in the park they're trying to rezone. It's a non-conforming use, but the trailers aren't stored properly, plus there's, there's concerns about the material that they keep outside also.
Charles, would that change, with the change in zoning? Wouldn't you still be citing them for storing the trailers incorrectly?
No, because if it's changed, the, where they're storing it now would be rezoned. It's, it's illegal to store them where they are now because of the, they're changing it from residential, I think, to, to this, and that correct?
Yeah. And, and as you all recall, that I showed on September the tenth, the pictures of this particular site, and it was just, I'm sorry, that's trash. And so we want to change the zoning so I can have more trash along Northeast Twenty-third Street. I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't sit there and defend that.
Right. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right. The motion is to deny. Cast your votes, and that item is denied. Item eight A two has been deferred already until October fifteenth. Item eight B begins a series of items that the planning department is presenting to us. These items are being introduced for council consideration at a future date. We'll be setting a public hearing on these items on November fifth. Bob, you want to go ahead and get us started with item eight B one?
Eight B one is an ordinance that was requested by OGN E to basically allow higher lightning protection and then towers for their smart grid communications between substations. And as proposed, that would allow them to go up to seventy feet. In a lot of cases at substations, there's already towers that take the wire, the energy out that are over that height, so we felt that it was a reasonable request. And there's representative.
So can I hear that again? There are already existing towers within most of their...
In a lot of these stations, the towers that are taking the, the wires that take the electricity out are taller than seventy feet.
Are taller than seventy feet, so this won't change the visual of any of the substations.
That's correct.
All right. Is, is that really the only negative, is just what it looks like, just appearance? Is it, of, of, of changing this ordinance of, of it just being higher?
Yes, that's really the only.
There's no safety issues or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Not to our knowledge.
Bob, are you saying that this situation already exists in violation of, of our ordinance?
Well, there's, there are locations that they've gone to the Board of Adjustment and got variances for height. The height is regulated by what the zoning district is. So currently, if you're in a residential, if they're in a residential area, fifty feet is as high as they can go. If they're in an industrial area, they could go higher than that because of the height requirement. So this really only addresses substations for OGN E. That's what the amendment will address.
So there are some substations that are non-conforming now? That was, did you, did I catch, hear that wrong?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Box on behalf of OGN E. I believe what Mr. Teener is trying to say is, when you look at the substations, it is moving power, you know, all over the city, and when it leaves, it will oftentimes leave on a transmission line. Those poles outside of the substation, common times are in excess of seventy.
David, I understand that, why you want it. What I, what I'm not understanding is whether or not there are existing substations that already have towers that exceed the current limit, and this is a, this is like the last case, where somebody's trying to bring, to some extent, they're trying to bring existing use under the, into conformity.
I don't believe...
If that's not right, I misunderstood what Bob said.
There are other towers, or other substations that have gotten approval from the Board of Adjustment that would be, would exceed this, but to my knowledge, there's not any that are out there illegally.
Right. And additionally, before, several years ago, the, the council amended the ordinance to allow substations by right within R-1. Prior to that, a lot of them were done via PUD or SPUD, so it would have been a negotiated element. This...
So all you know, the ones you know that exceed this height limitations for the zoning have been approved by BOA?
Yes, or through a PUD or an SPUD.
Yeah, they're not non-conforming. They're now conforming because BOA said they were.
Right. We had five hearings last month before the Board of Adjustment on, so that's correct.
All right. Bob, you want to talk also about eight B two? This has to do with restrictions on food sales from vehicles?
Really, two and three are combined, but this is, back in nineteen ninety-six, the council adopted an ordinance that restricted outdoor food sales around the memorial. With increased activity in midtown and on Automobile Alley, we met with the memorial staff, and we felt this might be a good opportunity to... staff and we felt this might be a good opportunity to reduce the size of that area. Basically, this, these ordinances would reduce it to a one-block radius around the memorial. And it also adds a provision that would allow activities to go on that, within that area, subject to approval of a revocable, a special permit, or, I mean, a special event or an activity permit. So this gives, you know, this area some flexibility on runs and those types of things.
And it's, it's our understanding that the memorial is okay with this ordinance-
Yes.
Mayor, I've, I've had a chance to talk to Carrie Watkins specifically about this, and she actually is encouraging it. You know, I think it was a very positive thing when the memorial was created to make sure we protected the zone, but the activity that's happening now is bringing people to them, and they're very supportive.
We met with them before we proposed them, and we kinda worked out the details on the, on the layout. And then the second one, there's two ordinances affected here, the outdoor food sales and the zoning ordinance, so that's why there's two ordinances.
Okay. Well, these items are just being introduced today. We'll be setting a public hearing for November 5th and invite any comments or questions on that date. Any more comments from council before we introduce these items today?
[inaudible]
All right, we're voting first on item 8B1. We'll have to do these individually. Cast your votes. Item 8B1 has thus been introduced. Pete, you wanna make a motion on 8B2?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. That item also is introduced, and now 8B3.
Second.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures, just a short list today. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak under any item listed under 8C?
All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes.
Passed unanimously. And item 8D is a slightly longer list on unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8D?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E is a revocable right-of-way use permit. Visual Image hoping to hold their Carnadium, and let's hear more about this event. Is anyone here today hoping to speak on this item?
Good morning, Mayor.
Steve, good to see you.
Yeah, we were hosting our-
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Stephen Schwartz, I'm representative of VI Marketing and Branding, 125 Park Avenue. Carnadium is our 11th annual fundraiser for the United Way, and last year, we had about 300 paid participants that made donations to the United Way. We're expecting a bigger turnout this year, and with the traffic and activity on the street, we wanted to petition the council for a revocable right-of-way use permit to close the street on the day of the event between about 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock on October 25th.
It's an incredibly fun event and delicious. I invite everybody to come down and have, have chili on Broadway. It's really fun. You had a great crowd stage last year.
Yeah, we had a great turnout and a lot of positive comments. Obviously, we recognize the impact of closing a street downtown on a Friday Business Day. We will have barricades on the east and west end of the 100 block, block of Park Avenue with volunteers that will let residents of 131 in and out of their parking garage or other deliveries that need to be made.
All right, any comments or questions on this event? What is being asked for?
I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you all. Hope to see you there.
Item 8F, I understand we do not need executive session on this item today. How about a motion to strike?
Second.
Okay. Item is struck. And then item 8G is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? Claims recommended for denial. All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes, and passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. James, you wanna get us started?
Yeah, I got, I got to attend the Harvest Hills Homestead Association meeting last night. They had Master Sergeant Scala there, and I just wanna commend him for a very inspirational presentation. I think that in any neighborhoods in, that are in, within the Hefner Division, definitely contact him and, and have him out to one of your neighborhood association meetings cause he, I, I felt motivated afterwards to get more involved and, and to protect my own neighborhood. So just wanted to commend him for that.
Yeah. Ed? Okay, Larry? Pete? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention that the Orr Family Farm had their grand reopening Saturday, and it was quite remarkable for them to be able to recover from the tornado that went through there in May, and with a lot of help from a lot of different people, they're open and ready for business. So I would encourage everyone to drive by there and just see how this area has really transpired from almost complete demolition to a very attractive, fun area. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanna just recognize the Latino Community Development Agency. They had a fabulous lunch last week at the Cowboy Museum. And Ruben Aragon, who succeeded Pat Fennell in the role as Executive Director, you know, had big shoes to fill, but he's just doing a remarkable job, and the work that that agency does throughout our community is really to be commended. Leadership Oklahoma City, after, I think, 12 years in the planning process, last week dedicated, just a magnificent piece of public art called "The Compass Rose" down at the Boathouse District. It's easily seen from the highway, right in the turnaround as you go. The artist, Owen Merrill, who's from New York, was here for the presentation. Sculpture was manufactured in California and delivered Oklahoma City a couple of weeks ago. It stands 25 feet tall and is a really magnificent addition to the Boathouse District. And I guess I would also be remiss if we didn't thank Mike Knopf and his incredible staff for putting on four days of regatta down on the Oklahoma River. We had kids from all over the country here rowing over the weekend, and lots of folks down on Saturday night for fireworks. And I just never cease to be amazed at how that project is developing and how many families we serve, the adventure area with the rope scores, the climbing tower and all. We're just busy all night long. It was really exciting, and congratulations to Mike and staff for all the hard work.
All right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, I had several neighborhood activities. One of the neighborhood activities that touched my heart was the activity that was organized by some African-American males who lived on Northwest 117th Street, Northwest 118th Street, who was concerned about cleaning up their neighborhood. And so a couple of years ago, they formed a 117, 118-block festival where they brought the community together to promote positive things in their community. So hats off to those gentlemen. This weekend, of course, was the Regatta Festival, thank you, which was a magnificent event. And also, if you all are interested in me playing the tuba, I will be actually marching to the Millwood Alumni Band this coming up Friday. You know, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to pick up the tuba, the first time in 12 years. And so I still got it. I still know how to play the good old tuba. And that is my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hope, I hope there's videotape on YouTube of that, John.
I'm sure it will be.
All right. City Manager reports.
Yes, Mayor. Earlier today, council approved the next streetscape project for Project 180. And Eric Winger's gonna bring us a short presentation about, a little bit more detail about that project and what you can expect in the future beyond those, that project.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers and Mayor and Council. I think as we introduce today and we look at the next phases of Project 180, we've obviously come a long way with five streetscape packages completed. Of course, they've completed the Mary Botanical Gardens, we've completed the Bicentennial Park, and there's some additional streetscapes that I'm gonna go through some detail today, but there's also some other projects that we'll update further in the future. But with the approval of Package 6A today, we've developed a phasing plan so that you can understand better about how that work will be put into place. And so we're looking forward into three additional bid packages. The first of those has been bid and now awarded with a council approval today. Two more to come here shortly. We're taking some items that we experienced in Packages 1 through 5, and so as you look at this first slide, this bid package is 6A and 6B. This identifies the areas that'll be affected. What you see in yellow is 6A. What you see in orange is 6B. One of the reasons that we did separate 6 into two packages, of course, is the hub with the Santa Fe Station, the work that'll occur in front of that station on EK Gaylord. So having that work be separated so that it can be coordinated with the hub was important. So that work has not been bid. What has been bid to date is just 6A that you see here in yellow. Below bid was Rudy, $6.8 million. And I'll describe those phases here just a little bit more detail. Bid Package 7 is identified on this slide in brown, and again, it'll be the third and final streetscape package of Project 180. These next few slides, I think, will show you the, the rate of progress of the work and how we expect it will lay out. And one of the things that we're obviously very sensitive to is the impacts to businesses, the impacts pedestrians downtown. As these projects move into the heart of downtown, there's a considerable amount of activity underway. And I'll point out a few key things where we've actually coordinated with the Memorial Marathon, we've coordinated with opening night and some of the other downtown events to make sure that streets that would be in those areas aren't affected. So as you see the work beginning here fall of 2013, you'll see that McGee and Robinson will go under construction here later this month of October, with an expected completion in late spring. There's several items that, that are gonna be included in this. Of course, there's still the utility work that will be underway, but the biggest difference that you'll note, you recall that we use concrete barricades and upper panels, graphic panels around the Mary Botanical Gardens to separate construction from the pedestrian areas. We've done and have seen similar with the Devon Construction and also the construction that's around Sandridge at this same time. That's going to be reinforced and implemented on these future packages so that the sidewalks can remain open and free of construction for those businesses that are going to be on those streets that are closed. In this case, McGee and Robinson in this first phase. But as that work is completed, and you're gonna notice also that only two to three blocks of construction are underway at one time. The contractor's gonna be required to finish those blocks before they're gonna be able to tear up additional blocks. And so something that's different than the original packages will, there won't be 10 blocks of deconstruction before we start reconstruction. Moving on to the next phase, you'll see that as work is completed, we'll move on to McGee and Robinson in different sections. You'll see different blocks highlighted as we walk through this. The arrows on the drawings represent some of the detour routes that we've already started conceiving, just to make sure that we've got access into and out of downtown. Moving on, and, and this will be in the spring of 14 into the fall of 14, you're gonna see now the Package 7 work will start to take place. We're anticipating bidding Package 7 in late spring. But again, as we coordinate with the work that's already underway on Package 6A, you'll again see the attention to detail, trying to make sure that we keep as many streets, as many intersections, open at one time. As we move into the early fall, you'll now see the first component of 7B. We anticipate that the coordinated efforts with the hub, we're engaging an architect now to start that process so that we can start master planning the, the Santa Fe, the improvements to Gaylord. You'll actually see now the Phase B, the 6B showing up on the lower right-hand drawing, starting to put Gaylord under construction as early as next fall. That work will extend into late spring 2015. And now, as we move into late spring of 2015, you'll see the active number of blocks that are under construction start to reduce because, again, as we start 6A today, those projects will start to be completed. We'll then be working on 7 and 6B. So as we walk through this, you'll see intersections completed, new street segments going under construction. As we go from fall of 15 into the winter of 15, you'll see the concentrated efforts there on Gaylord into the winter of 15. You'll see us completing work with the rest of the packages in the summer of 16. So the balance of the approach is, again, to reduce a lot of the impacts of the downtown businesses, to encourage pedestrian access during construction, taking more of a, of a systematic approach to construction, a few blocks at a time, a few intersections at a time, maintaining access throughout the process, keeping those barricades up to separate construction from other activities. But obviously, we'll work very closely with the local businesses. We're already out having those meetings and making sure that they're aware of upcoming construction and general timelines. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you might have.
All right. Questions for Eric about the Project 180 improvements we'll be making? Ed?
Just a couple. What, one, I, I know everybody's assuming that the Oklahoma City Boulevard is just gonna go as, as planned, but what, if the Federal Highway Administration were to say that, that they would prefer a grid alternative, and then you wanted to, I know you had concerns about north-south traffic, would that change your thoughts about any of these projects or?
You know, the only segment that I think that might be affected would be the north-south section of Gaylord that would abut the Boulevard at that location. So this would be that area just east of the Chesapeake Arena, just west of the elevated railroad tracks. Obviously, as that information might come available, we'll coordinate that directly. Generally speaking, the Project 180 is actually more into the core of the downtown, so it's pretty far away from the Boulevard, generally speaking. Just that one segment of Boulevard would touch it.
But on the western side, there, you don't think there'd be any?
You know, I don't see us making any design changes. Again, we've already implemented the, the one-way conversion to two-way. Really, now, we're just doing the streetscapes and the beautification of, of the downtown area with the, with the pedestrian benches, the new lighting, the concrete streets, the ADA accessibility. So I don't see any major functional changes to the streets. It really is a streetscape.
Can you talk about, and I'm sorry, my eye, these are small and my eyes don't allow me to see exactly, but can you talk about integration with the streetcar and on, on the phases on the northern side that, that go along the route?
Absolutely. And I think, let's just do a general approach for Project 180. I think that there's a number of completed streets. There's obviously new construction that might be affected by the streetcar as that route framework was adopted and as we move forward. The streets are constructed in such a way, and I think most are being more familiar with those, they're, they're constructed in panels. You'll see a panel per lane. You'll see that there are expansion joints placed to make the easier removal of concrete once we finalize that route and begin construction of the route itself. Technologies could change. You know, what's required for the overhead catenary might be different from a hybrid electric or some other type of vehicle. So obviously, we're waiting on that information. But I would tell you that we're poised with Project 180 to accept whatever that might be. So there won't be the need to remove curb line to curb line paving. We would simply be removing a lane of pavement to install streetcar tracks and then moving forward. So a lot of the utility relocations that have already been done would hopefully be unaffected. It is possible that there's gonna be additional, you know, utility impacts as a part of the final streetcar alignment as we work, especially in areas outside of Project 180. And I think those, of course, will be addressed by that project, but from an integration of 180, we're prepared to keep it very modular and accept whatever those recommendations and future construction requirements are.
If, if the streetcar ran down the middle, down the median, would you remove two lanes or?
You know, at this time, we're still planning that the streetcar run in a lane of traffic. I think that was conceived early on as that it would operate under the same premise of an automobile. It would stop at stoplights, it would use left turn lanes if it were to turn left. If there was a recommendation made and that needed to be changed, then we would simply need to adapt the design to accommodate that. The only road that I'm aware of that we're looking at maybe even a median option at all would be the Boulevard. But really, the other downtown streets don't have medians that would be wide enough to accommodate the downtown streetcar. Thank you.
Eric, could I ask, what kind of meetings are you planning to hold with the business owners? Are you gonna do block-by-block public meetings or, you know, I know people are a little nervous.
Right now, they're being met with individually. So Ms. Shannon Cox, who was very assisting in the first rounds of, of the packages, is meeting with them. Of course, other staff, I think most of us are familiar with Michael Clark and a lot of his hard work. I mean, they're literally in the streets, meeting with the business owners one at a time. If we find the need for a larger meeting, we definitely can do that. But we hope to still maintain through the city's website at OKC.gov, the Downtown Traffic Advisories. It will advise of the future construction, and of course, we'll keep the Project 180 links very active with any updates that we can provide.
Okay. You might let me check with some folks just to see if maybe a meeting would be a good idea-
I'd be happy to do that.
-to kind of give an overall picture and then keep individual property owners advised as we go through their-
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else for Eric? All right, Eric, thanks.
Thank you.
I think that concludes City Manager Reports. All right. We have a series of people who have signed up to speak under Citizens to Be Heard. I'll ask for them to keep their comments to three minutes in length. Roy Stafford? Roy Stafford. Need your name and address for the record.
Current address is 800 West California, City Rescue Mission. Good morning to the mayor, members of the city council, Ms. Kersey, Ms. Sawyer. This show and tell will be brief. Psalms 86 is a prayer of David. And the first verse, it begins, "Bow down, your heir, O Lord, hear me, for I am poor and needy." needy." Verse 14 reads, "O God, the proud have risen against me, and a mob of vile men have sought after my life, and I have not set them before you." And the final verse reads, "Show me a sign for good, that those which hate me may see it and be ashamed, because the Lord has helped me." The practice of using bad behavior of non-freestanding businesses in Oklahoma City has to be stopped. It must be exposed. When an Oklahoma City police officer, Sergeant Chapper, requested of me on 9/1708 to leave the Bob Howard dealership, I complied and was not expecting to be arrested at a family-owned property that the address on, was listed on the Oklahoma City Activity Report to perform a demonstration the following day against Dennis Davis, the GM of the franchise. And I was arrested for a, arrested for a traffic warrant which I had not paid. But coupled with that was a citation for trespass. And my understanding of a trespass citation, if you requested to leave and you leave, that ends the trespass citation. I'm going through the same thing today. I have to go to court today on a trespass citation at a different store, Toyota store. I was attempting to purchase a vehicle for a family member and was denied access to test drive a vehicle under really, really bad circumstances. That's the recording I want to play for you. And I'm going to really be brief. The public service announcement package is Ed Welsh's conception. Ed Welsh shared with me a story about my father's grocery store in 1948, the reason he got out of that business. The reason was racial tension at that time was really, really high. African-Americans were not afforded the luxury of irreconcilable differences in a divorce. My father filed for divorce knowing he had committed adultery by getting my mom pregnant with my older brother. That was the only way he could get out of that business. There was a sign placed a quarter mile from his store saying, "African-American, you're black donkey, better be out of town by sundown, or we're going to hang you." Things have not evolved as much as we'd like for them to. This package, if I'm not involved in this package, creative-wise, it's going to go zero. It's not going to do anything. It's going to waste a bunch of money and a bunch of people's time. Ed's legacy, Ed shared with me his racial values at that time. He evolved.
Ed, how long will this recording take?
The recording of the, the recording of the, oh, it won't, the total recording is about seven minutes, but I can, I'm not.
You've got just a few seconds left, Roy.
Okay, well, watch this. I'm not trying to play the recording because my point is this. Oklahoma City is, in the eyes of the people that sent me this shirt, this is a trademark shirt. You can't get this printed up at a print shop. The guy that sent me this shirt was the information officer here for the FBI, left two years ago. He's involved with friends and a family on the East Coast. These people really want me to do what I'm doing. You know I haven't worked since 2008, 45 pounds overweight, you know my history. I mean, come on. Dexter, you know, I've spoken of the company man, that's Dexter Nelson. You know, you don't know the whole story, but somebody in the hierarchy of the municipal government has read the transcripts and told me I should have never went to prison. They were trying to get somebody that was associated with me, and I don't do that.
Roy, thanks for coming down.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying, Mayor, this needs to be done. This needs to be done. And the way that it's getting done, it's going to be a waste of money. It's not going to be effective. We only get one chance to get the faith of the community back to all of us after all we've gone through. Thank you.
Joe Sarge Nelson?
How you doing, council? And Mr. Mayor?
Morning.
I'm here again about the streetcar. And I am in Oklahoma City. I took a lot of pictures yesterday, all down through there. I think I even took a picture of where you live by accident. Well, it wasn't an accident, but anyway. But anyway, there's all these pictures here. I have one problem where we turn left off Northwest 11th, going west between the Volvo dealership and Mercedes-Benz. I was looking right straight at the sanctuary of the church. Yet I looked on your old map and I don't see any deviation or anything. Are y'all planning on putting that streetcar right there or sanctuary? But anyway, neither here nor there, but I thought I'd bring that up. But I do have some distasteful things, but I've had a lot of phone calls about this, so I figured I might as well bring it up. And last Tuesday, lack of a better word, it's kind of like a dog and pony show in here. Almost everyone that spoke for the streetcar worked for the streetcar in one way or one respect or another. And the ones that were against it, the citizens, were from Ward 7 and the other people that live in that area. My problem being is that I've asked several times that we suspended the funding, this and that, what have you, to get things straightened out. But like the canal, the streetcar, and I, like I said, covers Bricktown, Downtown, Medtown, and Auto Alley. I drove it personally, so I know that that exists. And no offense, Mr. Mayor, about a couple of people, I thought it was funny at the time. It's becoming known as McTown, and it kind of pushed the wrong button more than me, but that was neither here nor there. This thing is going to become primarily entertainment because I don't see anybody being able to ride this thing. The businesses that are there are only open like eight in the morning, eight in the evening. Sundays, most of them aren't open at all. And if this thing's going to run seven days a week, 24 hours a day, I'd like to know who in the world's going to pay for it because the city ain't going to be able to pay for it. The streetcar that's being sold to us, as far as I was concerned, is kind of like Obamacare, that's financially sound, but it's not. I'd like to see some numbers put together, see they add up. And in reference to you, Mr. Mayor, you've done a lot of good things for this city. I will be the last one to say you haven't. But please, I want this streetcar to become a legacy because that's, that's going to be a hard tag to carry around your neck for a long time to come. The only other thing that I had problems with is when the people got up here and talked, they talked straight about that streetcar. And what's planned down the road, that's all well and good. But over at the OUU area, better known as the Health Science Center in the Capitol Complex over there, there's nearly 5,000 to 10,000, up to 40,000 people in that area in the hospitals and the medical area that would ride that streetcar if it went in that direction. Now, I don't foresee people going to car parks, places, park their car and then get on a streetcar to go somewhere if they're already there. And the only offense that I took last week was one thing, and I'll tell you straight. And of course, this is not to offend anybody. I don't want this to offend anybody, but all these people did all this talking up here yesterday, and I really felt, Mr. Mayor, that you put Mr. Pettis right in the line of fire. It was totally uncalled for. You just tossed him in the flames, and he had no choice but to vote the way he did. I don't know if there was something going on behind the scenes that made that vote happen. I have no idea and no way to tell. No offense, Mr. Pettis. I just kind of resented the idea that eight people up here are elected and how in the world he got pointed at. And it really was quite offensive. The other thing that I had to be was the gentleman up here with the sign. He made references to Mr. Shadib in Ward 2 that were totally false. Steve Lackmire, the Daily Oklahoman, should get the dog show award, wherever it is, and show him sitting on a bone. I don't know where he's going to get his next paycheck, but he was there and overheard that conversation. He could have straightened it out and used some phony, technical, journalistic idiocy and said that he wasn't going to do anything about it. And the man that was standing right up here was dead wrong. But anyway, I will be able to speak this week, next week, and on 52nd, and that'll be the last time you'll see me at this hearing for a good long while. But anyway, it's been nice, it's been fun. Did I make you proud of me, Mr. Mcatee? He's my Ward Counselor, by the way. Pete and Mr. Shadib and the rest of you. I know Mr. Jordan's proud of me. I ain't afraid to stand up and talk to him law face to face. And I wish you well and good luck on being Vice Mayor. I do pay attention to the news. I really do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thanks, Joe. Butch Leonard?
My name is Butch Leonard. My address is 12516 St. Luke's Lane, Oklahoma City. I'm a sales representative for Digital Graphics Commercial Printing Company here in Oklahoma City. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for listening to me this morning. I can't, I've sent you a letter here. I sent you an email last week. The letter is a little different, talking about the electronic bidding system. It says in the article, in the journal record, that the responses could go from five to six, from five to six to maybe as many as 80, to bids that we send out. We certainly will get a very low price when we give a bid like that. I do not believe that we're doing the best for our city. I want to turn your attention to the multiplier effect and the multiplier effect ratio. Maybe those terms are not exactly correct, but they'll give you the idea of what I'm trying to tell you. When my company does a job for the city and you pay my company, they pay taxes, they pay the employees, the employees pay taxes, the employees go to the grocery store, and on and on and on. The multiplier effect I'm saying here becomes the equivalent, maybe of a dollar 50 cents for each dollar that we save here in Oklahoma City. If the dollars go, like the article says, to Arizona or California, or regardless of where they go, that money's gone forever. They pay nothing to pay our infrastructure, our utilities, nothing. The money is just gone. I think that saving 20%, maybe as much as 20% on a bid is, pales in comparison to what the money would bring if we left it here. I do think that the overcrowding of vendors could be a good situation. This would be a good situation to organize and streamline that. I'm asking you not to cripple our economy. I'm asking you to limit the scope of these bids where they can stay in this area. Some years ago, I was the purchasing agent for my company. I had vendors calling me from Dallas and from Tulsa, from all kinds of states, and I told them straight out, if I can buy it here in Oklahoma City, I'm going to buy it in Oklahoma City. If I can't, my next stop is Tulsa. If I can't find it there, I will call you. I did that very thing. I went, called people in Dallas, said, "I can't find it. Do you have it? Do you want to sell it to me?" One more story. My wife and I went to Tulsa last week, last month. I filled my car up with gas in Oklahoma City because I believe my money needs to stay here. And I'm fanatical about that. I have been for many, many years. I'm asking you, you're getting competitive bids already. I'm currently not doing any work for your company because I got beat out on the bids. I gave you a good bid, somebody gave you a better bid. We're getting good competitive bids. We don't have to go. I'm asking you to limit the scope of where you send out these bids. Do not concentrate on going out to giving our city away to the world and giving our money away to the world. Please do everything possible to keep the money here. I was at an open house at Malarkey Roofing last week on National Manufacturers Day. Jim, the president and owner of Malarkey, got up and spoke to the group of us and told how proud he was that he spent all his money, his manufacturing money here to set up that plant. He bought his material here, he used the people, workers here. He was so proud of that. And now, will we tell him when it comes time to buy shingles, we're going to give a bid to California, or we're going to let somebody in Ohio or something to do that? I hope not. I'm asking you to please limit the scope. On the sheet, I ask about a 5% or 6%, what you used to call an in-state preference when the state did it. Ms. Kersey tells me that the city charter does not allow that, so it can't be. But I'm asking you, just do everything you can to keep our money here, to be in our city and build our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Butch. Bob Kemper?
Bob Kemper, 2604 Dittmer Road, Oklahoma City, Representing Kemper Consulting Group. I rise this morning in support of the Northeast Line. Just a little bit of background, it was almost two years ago that I called for, I called the city manager and asked for a meeting that would be with the Union Pacific Railroad, the city manager, and other stakeholders and principals to discuss the possibility of acquiring some infrastructure that's needed for any kind of future commuter rail service. And that's the Bricktown lead and the trestle going up on the Burlington Northern Santa Fe behind what is now our hub. The meeting was well-attended. We had the city manager's office, several council members were in attendance, ACOG, COTPA, the chairman of the Oklahoma House Transportation Committee, and various other people. And at that meeting, it was determined that, yes, we do need to acquire this property. But UP's concern was and need was for a study to be conducted and for how Oklahoma City plans on separating those operations, say for the Northeast Line, perhaps for a line coming from Tinker Midwest City in Oklahoma City, how to separate those operations for liability purposes. They don't want to be liable for passenger, any kind of passenger service crossing freight railroad. And out of that meeting, we determined also that probably the easiest potential commuter rail service in central Oklahoma is on the Northeast Line. And the request was made from that meeting for a study to be conducted, which there was a presentation this morning. And I'm in full support of that report. I think they did an excellent job. However, it pulls up just a little bit short. In many private conversations I've had with Remington Park, the Adventure District Association, with the Chickasaw Nation, and with other stakeholders in the area, they would all like to see this study extended, crossing Martin Luther King into the Adventure District, perhaps at Remington Park, do a land use study for a potential park and ride. And in these conversations, it also became apparent that there's a strong possibility for a public-private partnership in covering some of the operation and maintenance, but they want to explore this. Also in these conversations has been the discussion about creating a regional transportation authority. And under the existing law, the regional transportation authority can be enacted simply by passing a resolution of the governing bodies of any coterminous Oklahoma City, count, or county. For example, Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County, by resolution, can create a regional transportation authority and concurrently run that with an economic development authority under the same state statute. And so there is interest in going forward with this, and I compliment the city on taking this issue seriously and going forward with this study. However, again, it comes up a little bit short, and I want to urge the council, the mayor, the city manager to extend this, go across MLK and see what we need for land use, what we need for a terminal, and how to integrate this better into what we have in downtown Oklahoma City. One last comment is that to a person in that area, they feel that the two major entertainment districts in Oklahoma City should be linked. They feel that they have been excluded from some of the planning and very much want to participate, and they'd like to see something happen. One last comment, I want to also thank Oklahoma City for remaining open and not closing for business. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. All right. It's like we're done. We adjourned.[1789.57][1789.57]